Morning, and welcome everyone to our Spanish Fork Planning Commission meeting tonight. Glad to have you here. I've asked Commissioner Warnake if she would lead us in the pledge.
If you'll repeat after me. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all."
Thank you. All right, looking at our agenda, it looks like the first item we have on here is approving the minutes from September 2nd. Has everybody had a chance to look at those? Are there any questions with that? Does anyone want to make a motion on those?
I make a motion that we approve the minutes of September 2nd.
Got a motion? And a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, moving on to the next part of the agenda. We've got some city business to look at. First of all is the transportation master plan. Dave, we'll turn the time over to you.
Mr. Chairman, thank you. I want to be really quick, and then I'm going to let Mr. Clark from our engineering department take over the three action items that are on your agenda tonight. We do have public hearings scheduled for those. Typically, we don't get a lot of public input talking about these documents that routinely are updated every year or two. Starting with the transportation master plan, like you said, we think it'd be great if you allowed Mr. Clark maybe to present a couple of things. Please take as much time as you'd like to ask questions, make suggestions, anything like that that you might want to do. If you'd like to take, I'd call it a deeper dive, to get into more of the details of any of the three items that we have on your agenda tonight, I really invite you to do that. I mentioned in the work session that these are things that are largely technical in nature, and all candor, they're things that I usually don't really get into a lot of details on, except for a handful of things that maybe I do bring something to the discussion that's useful, or otherwise it's something that I care a lot about. And should you want to spend more time on it, that's perfectly fine with us. I don't think there's any huge rush at the same time. I don't necessarily think that there's a need to take longer than you want to, or that you feel comfortable with. So, tonight, with each of these three items, they're here for you to make a recommendation to approve, recommendation to deny. Either of those two things could be done with conditions and recommendations and suggestions, or whatever that might be. And also, you could continue them, like I said, if you wanted to take additional time, maybe even meet with staff outside of a regular planning commission setting. So, that's my intro. I'm going to take it from there. Mike?
I'm going to try and talk from here. You can hear me. I'm going to pull up on the map a version of the transportation master plan that will be available through a link. This is called a story map, and it kind of takes out all the extra verbiage, all the appendices and everything, and really gets to just the maps with some commentary. You can zoom in and zoom out. A little bit, I guess, background on this. MAG, or the Mountain Land Association of Governments, funds and produces a regional master plan, just like the Wasatch Regional area there as well. And they look at all the cities, how can they connect not just with roads, but with bikes and with commuter rail and everything else. They look at existing conditions, and then they say, what if this valley is completely full of people? In 2050, how does this transportation system hold up? And what improvements do we need to make in order for it to function well? So, they do that on a regional, large-scale level. What we do then is we hire consultants. They take our piece of that puzzle and say, now, how do we make that large 50,000-foot view now fit for Spanish Fork with our needs, with our traffic, with our zoning, with our planning mechanisms we have? And so, they break that down into smaller pieces. So, if we look at the first one here, it's a vicinity map showing the city, the darker color is where we are today, the lighter color is showing kind of our growth policy boundary there, saying, here's where we think we'll get to in a reasonable time. Obviously, that can change as time goes even further. The next one looks at your transportation analysis zones. So, these are mostly from MAG, but we also have smaller versions cut up based on things we know that exist that would be probably missed on a large-scale level, where if there's an industrial right next to a commercial, next to a residential, we can draw those lines a little more fine than they can at a regional level.
How often does MAG update their projections, population increasing projections?
So, the last one was six years ago, and they were at a 2040. And so, then this year, or last year, I guess, was a 2050. So, they do it every four to six years, and then every once in a while, we'll jump to that next 10-year projection window. So, we try and correlate our master plan updates, big ones, with theirs, because they pay a really large sum to do what's called a cube model of traffic. So, then we take that cube model, cut out our section of it, and then we run models within our own city, a little more dialed in. So, it wouldn't make a whole lot of sense to run that model a second time three years from now, because it hasn't changed. But looking six, seven years out when they've done a new one, that's a great time to do So, there's our zones. The next one, again, this will be available from, there should be a link inside of the master plan document, as well as on our website, will be a link to this. This shows the different characteristics of the roads that we have today. I'll just kind of skip through some of these real quick. This shows a map of who owns what roads. Sometimes we get a question on, well, is that the city road? Or is that a county road? Is that UDOT's facility? So, we provide a map of that, talk about our transit, existing, again, all existing stuff, trails. I won't hit on that one as much, but we do have a trail map and a trail plan. As you can see, the trail is being built around the city. All that's according to a plan that we have to try and advocate for and provide ways for people to ride their bikes, go for walks in a safe location. If this will load. This one's a big data set. There we go. So, what they did is they took all that transportation analysis zones, and they said, okay, all those people need to get somewhere for a job, go to school, travel for different reasons. How does that look on our roads? And how do these roads perform today? So, you can see the green, they're looking good, or pretty low demand. Yellow, that's getting close, and then red, that's when you start seeing some grid locks, especially in the peak times. So, as expected, Main Street, main culprit there, and a couple of side streets off of that, a couple of side streets off of US 6 as well. Let's get down to the next one. So, if we weren't to build any, we wouldn't widen any roads, our transportation system in 2050 would look something like this. So, they take our existing system, throw on all that traffic, and obviously, not looking great. So, then it presents a need for improvements to happen in the system to allow for better roads and bigger roads to handle that additional demand. Let's go down. All right, so this will be the main one here. So, they provide recommendations, and we've since massaged and did some other things with it to try and get down to a plan that we can then follow, not just for the city projects, but also as development comes in. How big a road does this need to be to handle a 2050 traffic load? Let's have you build it that wide, rather than being short-sighted, building a building where that road should be, and then having to buy that building down the road when traffic exceeds the capacity of that road. So, a couple of highlights of this map, again, it is a little busy, just there are a lot of improvements. The first one is, let me draw that. First one is the 2700 North interchange. That one's on the four- to five-year time horizon of that being constructed, built, and then improvements to side streets. Obviously, when you build an interchange, people drive more on that road than now. So, that will be an improvement there. Another one is the west end of Center Street, about 1200 West. Not only in an interchange, but also a future commuter rail. UTAs, excited to have commuter rail extend south to this point. So, that's a future project. Another one, Highway 6. Again, it's really busy today. That's another one they're looking at doing some work on, or sorry, they suggest doing some improvements on, and Main Street. So, if you'll notice, all of those are UDOT roads that are the big projects, the big arterial roads. So, we'll be working closely with them to make those get on their radar, get funded, and then actually happen before we have too many years of that congestion.
Mike?
Yeah.
Why, can you talk a little about the roundabouts placement of them? There's just so many more off to the west side of town, especially like we talked about in our previous meeting, right on the high school. Do we have any, is there any, I know they're supposed to be safer, better traffic flow, but when it looks like by the Spanish Fork High School, we have a lot really close together. Is there any concerns with that?
Yeah, so the mayor and city council, as well as park works directors, and vigment for the city is to try and make it as safe as possible. And the data shows that roundabouts are really the most safe option to go off of. The reason there's more on the west than on the east is the east is mostly built. A lot of them already have signals, and those that don't, we have to take the cost into consideration as well. The idea of buying multiple houses, churches, et cetera, we have to really balance the cost versus the reward there, and the funding mechanism.
Speaking about roundabouts, follow-up question. So, safer for vehicular traffic, is it also safer for pedestrians?
Yeah, so you have like 70% less injury rate on a, I can pull up the stats, but on the roundabouts than you do on signals. Because when you're going around a roundabout, you're at the highest 20, 25 miles an hour if you're really getting, going around there, versus someone running a red light or a stop sign, and a T-bone accident versus a glancing blow. Think of headlights kind of tapping as you go around versus a T-bone accident. So, statistically, it's proven they're safer. So, whereas the direction I and the consultant received was, let's put as many places as possible. And then when we get down to actually going to install it, like around the high school, let's take a dive. Right now, we have a consultant doing a study on roundabout versus signal, what property would need to be acquired, how it would flow with the new school, how the orientation actually is going to be facing west instead of south and east. So, taking a dive to say, how does it really work in that application? But at this stage, 10,000-foot level, roundabouts and intersections would be the desired outcome. Signal could be the results, depending on the intersection.
Mike, can I just add?
Yeah.
To the question about just proximity to schools, and what I'm familiar with relative to roundabouts, and where a lot of times they prove to be very effective, are in environments where you would anticipate there being a lot of pedestrian activity because of how much safer they are, because of, and just to maybe clarify about the safety, like Michael mentioned, you typically have lower travel speeds through that type of an intersection than you might through another type. But also, the roundabouts are generally designed with a refuge, so that instead of maybe crossing 60 feet of asphalt as a pedestrian, you're crossing 30 to get to the island, and then you're crossing another 30. And that island, literally, that is, you could say, at least a vehicular, vehicle-free place, which also enables pedestrians to just focus on one direction that traffic might be coming from. So, they're really, really good in those types of environments, I think, in proximity to a high school. For that reason, it's something that is certainly worth really taking a close look at.
So, I have a comment and a question about that. Is there a difference, are traffic circles and roundabouts interchangeable?
Roundabouts here are typically a lot bigger. You would see these median islands here. In town, the 4th North, 8th East, one there, that's a roundabout. The one at 2040 East and 130 North by Mapleton High School that's painted magenta, that's a traffic circle. So, the traffic circle, or the roundabout really tries to divert the traffic, not divert it, turn the vehicle before they get in the roundabout, where traffic circles, literally, just something in the middle of the road that you can keep traffic moving on.
Gotcha.
Typically, it takes less space.
Yeah, it's painted maroon and gold.
Maroon and gold, yes.
Also, I am a huge fan of roundabouts and traffic circles. I lived in Australia for a summer, and man, you did not see one stop sign in that place. It was either a traffic light or roundabouts. And once you get used to them and know the rules, it's really a great way to go.
For sure. And on this graphic, it shows the conflict points at a typical intersection, and it's from 32 vehicle conflicts to eight, 24 pedestrian conflicts to eight. Significantly safer that way, less head-on crashes. So, there's, this document's one of ours we provide. They looked at roundabouts, different sizes of roundabouts, how many sites they looked at, looked at total injuries with and without the roundabout. So, 21 injuries versus 15. But the main one was, I think it was this one, so 73% reduction in injuries before and after a roundabout. We're collecting similar data with our roundabouts, just to see how they measure up. So, significantly safer that way. So, around schools, around any higher pedestrian areas is a great place to put them.
You've got a question for me, Mike?
Yeah.
So, is this their 30-year plan?
Yeah.
Is there anything, did they talk about or show anything west of I-15 as far as a secondary freeway that either goes across Provo Bay or goes west of?
Yes.
Utah Lake?
And I can pop open their plan real quick to show you a little more regional stuff. But yeah, they do.
Okay.
Give me about 10 seconds, I'll have that up. Is there any other questions with, yeah, with this? You'll probably notice, and Todd brought this up earlier, about some roads having, let's show, for example, like this one. You have a red road connecting to a yellow road with a less-than-yellow road, and that means it goes from a really big road to a smaller road. I say smaller, there's still five lanes, and then it opens up to a bigger road. In the modeling, they look at what's called annual, or average daily traffic. They look at the peak demand, and they say, what road can handle it? Go back out. And according to the model, most people that come from Salem and this county area would take this route to get to the freeway, and so their numbers are significantly higher. For example, 10,500 cars in 2050 versus 13,000 cars, and they, that's apparently a threshold where they feel like that larger road is necessary there. So...
That was actually one of the things we had, because we've had so much discussions on Del Monte, and how bad that, how the traffic injection, congestion is so bad there during the peak hours.
For sure.
And so, that was one that kind of surprised me, that it wasn't a bigger road projected for that area.
Yeah, fair question.
The one you just pointed out, is that where Woodland Hills Drive?
This one here?
Cuts over?
Yeah. So, this is Woodland Hills Drive to that signal, and then along, there's a hill, big hill, right here. This goes along the west side of that hill and to that new signal at Mill Road.
And why is that not projected over across, on Mill Road and Del Monte as bigger roads when?
Talking this road or actually Del Monte?
Del Monte and Mill. But Mill, lots of people are really concerned about Mill.
Yeah, so right now, it's a county road, right? It's just wide enough for two lanes, and then it's a shoulder. Now, on some parts of the arrived homes, it's developed, and it's widened on those sides, curb gutter, sidewalk, but on the other side, it's still just a shoulder. So, when the west side develops, it will be a full 108-foot cross-section. We'll be able to deliver the cars that need to go, but right now, it's just still a two-lane.
So, which of these roads will be developed by developers as they build out those areas, and which ones are funded by municipal or state funds?
So, most, all the roads will be developer-driven. There may be pockets where the city may need to help here and there. We'd probably apply for a grant from the same people who developed this plan. They say, this is the road you need. We say, okay, we're going to show you the need versus other cities' needs, and they score them, they rank them, then every year, funding comes out, and we can get some of that. The Center Street project, that widening project, was a city project, but we got a 94% grant, we'll call it, from MAG to pay for it. So, there are funding mechanisms even for city projects. So, we end up not paying as much as you would think. But most of those, especially on the west end, are developer-built and developer-wideened roads.
And so, you have this plan, so that when a developer wants to build, you say, this is the plan, and this is the size and standard that the road you need to do.
Correct, yeah. So, I'll say, what road is this? Well, it's a minor collector road. Here's the map. It's 90 feet of right-of-way, so here's what you need to build to chip in for your portion of it. And then there's impact fees to help pay developers back, so they aren't fronting. Say, if they wanted to build along this large UDOT road here, they don't want, they might kill their project to put in 35 feet of asphalt, and then these big planner strips and everything. So, there's impact fees to pay for that, upsize to these large facilities.
Okay, can I ask one more question?
You can ask all you want.
Okay, so, they're widening and putting a light in at the intersection of 8th North and 8th East, and is that, they're putting in a stoplight right there, a traffic light?
Yep, this one right here.
Oh, there it is. In that awkward place across from?
In and out.
Yeah.
Where the grid system meets a diagonal highway.
Right. So, my question is why, yeah, a horrible place.
If you look at all the UDOT roads are that way.
Right. Why was that not made a traffic circle and a traffic light was put in instead?
Price is about five times more expensive in the $10 million range, because businesses would have needed to be purchased.
Wow.
Because when you get so many lanes into a roundabout, it just keeps getting bigger and bigger. So, that gas station on the corner would have had to go. So, when they looked all the prices, and they sent it to MAG, and they talked through with MAG, that Hitey intersection was the best end result there. So, that's, if we would have gone for the roundabout, we would probably still be waiting for funding. Right-of-way is really expensive. That's why the retrofit roundabouts are really, really tough.
Can I ask a question about trails?
For sure. Want to go back to the trails map?
Sure.
Okay.
Okay, so, how do you, who pays for trails that aren't built yet to be built? And how do you decide, prioritize which sections to build next?
Yeah, so let's go, say, here, for example. By the way, the green will be, or should be as close as possible, showing on which side of the road it will go on. So, this trail will be on the east side of the road versus the west side, anyway. So, most of the trails are built by developers on collector roads. So, when they widen it, instead of putting sidewalk, they widen it five more feet and put an asphalt trail down it. If you look on 4th North here, for example, from the railroad tracks to about right here, that was all funded by developers when they built their subdivision. Now, there are some spots that won't have development, like along the river. There's no developers that are putting that trail in, but that isn't actually, the primary purpose wasn't for pedestrian access, it was for trail, or for river access. So, if there's a tree that's fallen, it's blocking the river, it's backing up, we need a way to get down there, even if it's middle of the winter, or whatever the conditions are. So, that's why that one was put in, and that was all done through a grant from the NRCS.
Wow, so all of us pedestrians that go on that are so grateful.
Yeah, it's really nice. I enjoy it.
So, Mike, sorry, Shawna, real quick on those that you're talking along the river, are they going to be paved like regular trails, or are they just going to be gravel?
So, all the ones from, you probably, the Speedy Spaniard, and all those that run on the north side of the river all the way down, that'll be paved, and most of them we hope to be paved. They just wear better, they last longer, a little more stable. There are some spots that we will just do kind of crushed rock, crusher fines trails, where pedestrians may not need to go. I don't have an aerial behind this, but there's a couple of spots south of the ballpark where one side already is asphalted, the other side, there's no bridge crossing, so there's really no pedestrian path to go on. Doesn't, it starts and ends in the same subdivision, so we can get our trucks back there, but for a pedestrian to go there, it's only a couple hundred feet. So, why pave it? We'll just put down the crusher fines and call it good for that one. So, it kind of depends where we're talking, but...
So, there's one end of the trail that is projected to go under Highway 6 and connect with the Mapleton system? Where's that going to go, under the freeway? How's that?
They're still working on that. There was an old tunnel existing there, but we're working through the details with the railroad. But the idea was to connect the upper part of the river, the windmills, sorry, my mouse is struggling. The windmills are in this spot here, was to connect here and then go over to their, I don't know what they call it, their canal, what's it called? Your trail that dead-ends?
I just call it the Mapleton Trail.
There's a trail that dead-ends somewhere in this area here, and the idea would be to go connect to that.
It's actually quite close, yeah. I, yeah, I was on it.
On a shoreline trail?
Well, it's kind of part of it.
That's above it, right?
That's even higher than that.
Yeah.
I think so, yeah.
Anyway, I ride to the end of that every day, and most days, and so I'm like, when's this going to cross?
I know, right? I've ridden it several times as well.
So, do you know?
It comes right there, you can see the end of the asphalt.
Right.
So, yeah, the goal is to connect to that one.
So, can you show us, so there's that, and where's our connector piece?
So, the connection, so dripping rock comes to about here. The idea would be making a connection somewhere about right here.
Any projection on when that'll be?
I don't.
There's a lot of logistics to...
There's a lot of railroad.
Railroad.
They're our best friends.
If the railroad wasn't there, I think you'd have it done. But there, there's some intricacies there, clearances that are a little tougher to meet, and then getting funding as well for that.
All right, thank you.
And the tunnel that you would use there is the old spur that went into the powder plant there.
Yeah.
That they don't use anymore. Which would be really nice to use that, but again, you're going to have to cross the tracks.
Right. Yep, we want to see that connected.
Yep. Put a real big jump on each side? Has the trail to the reservoir been finished yet?
No.
Not quite?
Anything else you want to look at? Are we wanting to, I assume we want to do these separately, right? Start with transportation plan, and then go on to the following two? So, any additional questions for Mike or for Dave on the transportation master plan?
I have a comment.
Go ahead, Joseph.
Thank you for doing that. And I really like that we're requiring a 2050 standard today. So, appreciate it. Thank you.
One more thing to note, I guess, really quick, and we'll move along. So, this is what 2050 would look like with everything built out. It'll take a second to look, because there's a lot of it. The idea was, and the consultant's instructions were, we need to get rid of all the red, all the red roads, Level Service E, F, all those ones of congestion, we want to see gone. As you can see, they're still red. We talked throughout a lot, tried to look at options. The only options, well, the first option, you'd think, well, let's widen it. Well, that has a whole lot of baggage with it, right? You widen Main Street, where's the parking go? Well, do you need to buy businesses? What's that real impact to the look and feel of Main Street? So, that wasn't really an option we wanted to go down and say was our plan. So, we looked at, well, are there other roads that could be built? Think of a second freeway to solve I-15's issues, or a road across the lake, which their website's down, by the way, or else I'd pull that up. I don't know why it's not working. I just get this picture. So, we looked at other options. So, a couple of things. One is, well, could we utilize 30 East in a different way than it is today? One is, well, could we utilize 30th East in a different way than it is today? Right now, it's 90 feet of asphalt, as wide as Main Street. Is there a way we could utilize that? It is a residential area. What pros and cons do we see there? But it does connect up to, close to Costco, does connect to Center Street, which then would connect to an off-ramp, on-ramp. So we've looked at that. The Center Street interchange is a big one. That'll really alleviate some things. That's why it's not worse than it is. So we're still exploring options to, that we like, to alleviate that congestion without widening the actual road. So that's still in process, I guess.
How does the Spanish Fork Main Street compare to like Springville's Main Street, where they're both basically...
As far as the number of cars, I don't know.
On highways. Do they have the same issue that we do?
I could look into that.
Any idea?
I don't know. I imagine they will. It's the same build as ours, same signal spacing, everything is ours.
How do, how do businesses on Main Street want the traffic flow to be? I would assume if I owned a business on Main Street, I want the cars to go slower to notice me, right?
I want cars to go slow and have parking that people can say, I want to go right there and turn off instead of, I gotta go to the next light, turn right, and I got a hump for parking in the back.
So widening Main Street is not an option that business owners would want?
They might have to build up and have parking garages, because eventually, if we get big enough.
So the jump from two lanes in each direction with a turn lane in the middle to three potentially has been proven to be devastating for businesses. It really, really impacts access. It really impacts pedestrian activity. So us being able to keep Main Street at that capacity into the future, I think is essential to keeping businesses viable through that corridor.
Has there been any more talk with the Main Street plan on doing islands in the middle with trees and things like that?
Yes. So I can't remember the addresses. Was it 6th to 9th?
I think that's right, yeah.
6th to 9th is one we're aggressively pushing to get done. That'd be medians. Most of the unsignalized would not have a left turn. So you'd have to go through instead of sitting there. And then cars that come from the minor streets towards Main Street from east and west won't be able to go through. They'd just have to take a right. And so some of those accidents, which is a pretty high accident area, a couple hundred crashes a year along Main Street, we really want to stop those turning movements that cause those T-bones. So yeah, that's something we're looking at as well. Eventually, we'd extend it down.
So although we do see red on the 30-year plan, that may not necessarily be a negative for Main Street.
Right. In a way, yeah, for businesses. And the alternative, we could make it yellow, but I already mentioned the downsides of widening it. So again, looking at other alternatives, other routes, other ways to get to and from places. The unique one about this as well is, this is the pass-through as well, coming south and north for Woodland Hills, this whole county area, Salem, getting more roads like this one, the Salem Parkway, what are they calling it, Elkridge Parkway? That one, be more of those roads built. So there's other ways to get off the freeway and get to those instead of getting off at 1,000 North and coming down Main Street.
And really just trying to predict the traffic flows at that time.
I mean, if it really is red, people will take, as the population moves south into the
Salem area, they can choose to take another route. That doesn't mean you have to ruin Main Street to have somebody just choose a different route. Make Main Street the way we want and the way it's good for the businesses and have people choose a different route to get to work.
So and the threshold is about 48,000 cars between the yellow and the red. That's what the model predicts. So as you can see, we're at 50, 40, 48, I'm right there. It's not like we're five times past the capacity. I'm right at that borderline of yellow and red. So saying right now, we're going to change the look of Main Street because 30 years from now, the plan says we'll be this close, I think it's a little short-sighted to do that, but it does mean we need to start looking at some other options now.
That's right, yeah. Thank you for reminding me. Any additional questions for staff before we move into public hearing? All right. Let's move into public hearing on this. Is there anyone in the public of all of you that are here tonight that would like to address and speak on the transportation master plan? All right, seeing none, we'll move out of public hearing. Okay, so we've got a few options with this. If everybody's comfortable with it, or if you guys feel good, we can make a recommendation to send it to the city council and approve it. We can recommend to deny it, or we can recommend to push it and continue to get more information on it. So we'll leave that up to any of you to decide if any of you would like to make a motion.
There's a motion that we recommend to the city council to adopt the transportation master plan.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. We'll do a roll call vote. We'll start with Commissioner Ernest.
Yes.
Commissioner Warnock. Commissioner Menon.
Yes.
Yes. Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
And Commissioner Traynor.
Yes.
Got it. Okay, that passes. So that will go to the city council in their next meeting?
It should be next week, in fact, yes.
Okay. Great. All right, moving on to the next agenda item, policy 4.39, construction standards.
All right, so usually we bring you like 50 pages of stuff and we try and glance through them all, so we're going to try and bring them a little more frequently but with less volume, so we can better drill down into the details if you'd like and really take a look instead of having too much to go through.
Before you start?
Yeah.
Could you tell us the difference between the red and the black on our document?
The red and the black?
Let, just, are those things that are added or are there things that were changed from the last?
The red line changes.
Oh, that's...
The red text.
Down here, okay.
Yes.
Those are added. There'll be a strike through if it's taken out.
Okay.
I guess, never mind, I thought it was just this top one, but it's the second one as well. So never mind, there are a few tonight. The first one is looking at when we, when we build out to an area, a lot of times, there's only, let's think Main Street, and we need to go out into the fields by Andy's Acres out to the west down here. You tee off that line, you send that line way out there, and you provide fire flow. Well, after so much development, there's so many buildings to take care of, and that line can only handle so much without being looped, that ends up being a little, not as safe, not, there's no redundancy. So if there's a problem with that line, not just one house, but 50, 100, 200 houses could be out of service. And so we wanted to have a standard clarification here that says, at what points do we require the developer to go loop? Now, if it's a four-lot subdivision or a 20-lot subdivision, we're not going to have them loop. We'll have a, they'll prepare to loop it, you know, they'll have a stub out so then someone else can help connect it. But what size of development do we then say, hey, you got to loop this line for redundancy or fire flow? So these are a couple guidelines. So for example, one thing, we don't want to have high-pressure swings. State mandated as well, but we don't want to see pressure swings high or low depending on the time. So if you have one eight-inch line, it can only handle so much before it drops pressure exponentially. And so we want to stay above that threshold. Another one is fire flow and minimum pressures. We want to keep those healthy. Our rule of thumb, we'll call it, is 50 units. At 50 houses, we need to have the line looped. You can build the 50 single line, but after 50, we need to have that line looped as part of the approval for development. And that's for drinking water. And then for pressure irrigation, looking at more like 35 acres of green space off of that line. Depends on the size of line. Again, that's where it's a little more up to the city engineer to help guide that, but overall, that's what we'd be looking at. If there's a supply to a critical facility, a wellhouse, a couple other, fire station, a couple other places like that, we definitely want that looped. And then water quality, we don't want stagnant water. At the end of the line, starts causing coliform growth and water quality issues, so we want to minimize that. So that's that one.
How does, while you're on that one, how does looping work? Can you explain that to me?
Let me show you a map. It'll make a little more sense. But not sewer.
Mike, what is the minimum water pressure?
So on a peak day, 40 PSI.
40 is minimum.
Yep. 30 on a peak hour, and then 20 PSI and a couple other conditions, but I'll keep it at 40. So as you can see, this is South Lane. If you've driven down there or not, because it's closed. That, that's a long dead-end line coming off of one feed. Now, their first phase is 20 some odd houses, and that's fine. We can do that. There's enough draw to, water quality, fire flows are great, we can model that. Well, they have four or five phases. There's a development here that wants to go in, and there's one here that's just starting. That's significantly more than 50. In fact, it's in the hundreds of homes. So at 50 units, they are now bringing a water line up to connect to this eight-inch line up here to give us a loop system through there. So if you have problems at this, any of these valves along that leg, you can shut it off and you still have supply through another leg.
Okay.
What about backflow preventers? What do we do? Do you just like partial or...
So we put those on all the houses. Each house has one, and then each business, all the meters have a backflow preventer in it. And we don't do cross-connections in between PI and drinking water.
And if there's a sprinkler system that has taken off of the culinary water, it has to have a vacuum breaker and atmospheric back...
Yeah, and we actively avoid those situations, but yes. Like the jail right now is on drinking water.
In the few places where there isn't, yeah.
Because we don't have PI in the area. They're our largest water user. But the, once there's PI there, then we'd have them switch over.
So what's our 30-year, what's the city's 30-year plan for water pressure as more and more homes come into the city? How do we?
So we do the same thing like the transportation system. We put the backbone system in today, put today's water usage in it, see how it performs today. Then we put future use on it. So we look at the land use zoning, everything, and say, pretend there's a house and a business everywhere. How does it do? And then we say, what improvements are needed? What wells? What water rights? What springs? You know, what do we need to meet those demands and keep the pressures above the, at least the state minimum, if not higher? And then we incorporate those into a plan and then execute that plan as we move along.
So how does that look 30 years out? Any idea?
Good. We have, we're good with water. There's no red, no red Main Streets on our water system.
So our water, our drinking water supply comes from where?
So Cold Springs, Crab Creek, and Wells.
And then the PI comes from the reservoir?
The river and Strawberry, the reservoir up there.
And how are we not just on pressure, but how are we on the amount of water we've got as the city grows?
So we have, we can keep up to 40 years of water rights. So we look out 40 years and say, okay, what would growth need for water? And anything in excess of 40-year growth, you can't require, we shouldn't be getting. And we were above 40 years.
So what's our...
We're just under, we're at 39 and something right now, and we're starting to now require developers to turn in that water.
So what's our 40-year growth number as far as resident count or home count or what? I'm just curious what...
71,000.
Eight, I thought it was 80-something according to this document.
I can't read 80 or 90.
So we're in the 80,000 range, give or take, and so doubling basically what we have right now in the city, and we're still fine as far as water supply goes. Okay. Because that's a concern you hear, that's a concern, at least I hear a lot on social media or whatever, is why do we allow so much growth? We're getting around out of water and this and that. So it's nice to actually know what the numbers are and how it's looking for the future based on the studies that you guys have done.
Yeah, and we've gotten grants. We want to conserve. So we've gotten grants to put the smart sprinkling systems in. Our water we put on our grass far exceeds any water we use in our house by multiple times full. I mean, tons of water outside. So doing that has been very good. On the other side as well for us, as far as supply, we have significant, our forbearers did so much in the water rights category to get us all the water we have today. So we're sitting, as far as other cities I've worked in as a consultant, this is the most water-rich city that I've come across as far as the amount of water we have the right to be able to get. Flow of the river is a big deal as well, but in general, our, between our springs, access to reservoir water, and then our well rights, we have quite a bit.
Do our, do our springs reside in Spanish Fork city limits?
No.
Does, do any other cities share those springs?
No.
So those are only ours?
Correct.
So we wouldn't need to worry about water being diverted to some other city or anything like that?
Because even like Provo River, they have like first rights of who gets the water. So this person gets this MAFS guaranteed, and then they can have this much more if the river's there. And then the next guy in the totem pole, and the next guy, and the next guy. And so some cities are pretty far down on that totem pole. And so you hear about the water restrictions and everything. It's not because there's not enough, well, there is enough water, but it's where their rights fall. And our rights are, we have them from the source down to our city.
Which is great.
It's expensive. I mean, those lines are big, they cost a lot of money, but we have access to them and it's our water.
That's awesome.
We own the, physically, we own it, so that's why.
How many, how many other cities are like that, that they own their own water source?
It's not totally uncommon, certainly.
No. Most of the big cities along here aren't that way. Some cities get it from other cities. Vineyard gets their water from other cities through six or seven PRVs that let the water through when they need it. So they're dependent on another city, but ours is a little different.
Spanish Fork needs to be complimented on the way that they have kept up with the water demand and having the foresight to it to acquire the water rights that are needed. One thing that's a little bit unique about Spanish Fork and will continue to be, everything you see there that isn't built on yet has water rights on it. Most of them are agricultural rights, but the city requires those rights to be turned to the city as they develop it. And so the water is there for the city, and you know, the agricultural land is kind of like a bank. It's sitting there with the water, ready to be used when it's needed by the city. And so the city's been wise in requesting and requiring that water to be left on the land when it's developed, whether it's for pressurized irrigation or whether it's for drinking water. That water is available to be put into the system.
So you could say, as we develop more, we get more water.
It's surrounded by agricultural land. There's very little land that's developed in Spanish Fork that was not agricultural, you know, in the prior years. So we're fortunate in that way, and Spanish Fork has been very good in acquiring those rights, and they've been good about that. And acquiring future rights too by being part of the CUP, the Central Utah Water Conservancy District's plans and their water for the area. Spanish Fork was one of the leaders in obtaining some of those water rights that will be available to the city in the future. So, yeah, it's put Spanish Fork in a great, great position water-wise.
That's awesome. So as far as drinking water, yeah, as people go vertical more, there's more water that will be dedicated to those residents. There's also then less green area needing to be irrigated as well, so there'll kind of be a balance there. As you mentioned, the CUP line that we have committed to and we are now going to start paying on in the next few years gets us water and access to acre-feet of water that is significant, it's a very significant amount of water that, through a pressurized pipeline. So in fact, all our wells in the next three years, we won't be using any wells throughout the whole city. All of it can be gravity. So if you think about the amount of cost to upkeep a well, to pump it, the power costs, all that's going to be, be able to go away because we have all these pipes connected[1775.33] all that's going to be, be able to go away, because we have all these pipes connected to reservoirs and springs higher up. So, we won't need to, well, there'll be backups, or maybe we'll just get rid of some of them, just depends.
That's great. How often are we replacing pipes? How long do they last?
We replace every year. We have a certain amount of funds, say half a million dollars a year to replace aged water lines.
How long does a pipe generally last before it needs to be replaced?
PUC is about seventy years. There's a bunch of asbestos cement and some other pipes that need to be replaced, old iron pipes. So, they're being replaced right now. Yeah, lead pipe, no. Those pipes are being replaced now, you can see a random project here or there, that's really what they're doing. But the newer pipes will last seventy plus years.
That's awesome, great.
And the city just, is in the process of acquiring another bond to continue to upgrade the lines, and some of them are to replace or to repair, lines that are in disrepair now, right?
That, we're building a pipeline. If you follow the power lines from the windmills down to Legacy Farms, there's kind of a straight line there. We're putting in a twenty-four inch line, that'll connect on to another tank that we can get our water rights through. It's a ten million gallon tank, that's the trail that Shauna rides on. That Springville's portion, or sorry, Mabelton's portion of that water, we're going to connect our pipe on to that as well. So, we don't, it will greatly increase the pressure on the east side of town, and give us another point of, another source to get that water. So, a little more redundancy there. So, that's a project and a new water tank, that was the last bond we, we're getting, most recent bond, I guess I should say.
So, just a question about the, the document that we're looking at is at four point three nine point two five, the storm land and groundwater drains. On C says air pressure test, and that's all been redlined out. So, what's an air pressure test, and why don't we need it anymore?
I gotta get down to it.
Sorry.
There's a couple red lines here.
It's like a whole section that's redlined out.
In short, we, it's not needed. The technology we have today, and frankly, if the, the pipes let water in and we convey it out, that's not a bad thing. If all storm drain pipes had holes in them to collect water around it, that wouldn't be a bad thing either. So, you'd collect areas that have too high a groundwater, and if happened to go an area that doesn't have any groundwater, and it percolates the water really good, and it lets it go there, back into our aquifers, that's a great thing. Now, sewer is another thing, we definitely want to test that one like crazy. We don't want any of that water getting into the ground, as far as stormwater goes. It's really just getting it from a place that's not needed, or not wanted, to a place where we do want it. Whether that's in the groundwater, whether that's in the lake, it's not a big deal. So, just a way to lower the cost for contractors and speed up some construction.
So, that section's not referring to pressurized lines. That section's referring to gravity drain lines.
Yeah.
Cool, thank you.
I don't know if you want me to hit on all these, it's quite long. I can give you a summary, or if you have any in particular, like Shauna had on the storm drain to kind of walk through.
I have one question that is related to this entire section. And that is, is that there are some fees that are charged, and others that are just held as a bond for the work that's done. What is the city's, what's the city, I, I don't know exactly where to find it, and I didn't, I don't remember reading it. Is there, does the city require a certain period of ti, or, does the city require a contractor to complete work on a certain schedule? In other words, how long can a road be closed before work is completed? Usually, usually it's in?
And what are the consequences if they don't?
Yeah, and what are the consequences if they don't? And are they variable, or are the consequences high enough that the contractor is going to get that baby done? Or is it, hey, I'll take five grand and take another week?
I agree. Yes, and all, yeah.
Is that in this document?
No, it's not. I have about seven pages of this with diagrams of fines per day. If you shut down sidewalk, how long can be shut down? What's your fine per day, or fee per day, we'll call it? It's per lane mile, it follows Provo and Pleasant Groves model. It's just not there yet.
That, that interests me, I don't know if it interests any of the other commissioners, but I would, I don't know if we can have that as a work item? Or if that can be just an individual meeting we have?
Yeah.
I don't know what else is still on that is, but that's.
We're vetting it.
Yeah.
If we could, you know, a draft form to everybody, you know, well in advance of a meeting, so you guys could.
That'd be good.
And it's brought about by the, the South Lane issues we're having right now.
That's in draft, not in code yet.
Correct. It's written, it's finalizing the numbers and timeframe that isn't too harsh, that no one wants to develop, or they're too scared to do anything. But it's got to be strict enough that it actually makes a change of behavior.
If you're giving them reasonable timelines, if they're exceeding the reasonable timelines, that's the only time the penalty comes into play.
Correct.
And so, it, it should be on the harsh side, because that is the only tool you have to curb the behavior.
So, on city projects, we have that, we build it into our contracts with developers and.
Public improvement bonds.
What's that?
Public improvement bonds, right?
Yeah.
For that, and more specifically, you're talking about the code as it pertains to a private drive aisle within a development? Is that where, that's where?
More talking about, Fiber Tel wants to go cut a trench across the road to bring it from A to B. And they get an excavation permit, they give us all their information, we issue the permit, they cut open the road, and then we, we can't find them. I don't pick it out them in any reason, just in a business name, but what is our ability to, say, go close that road by Thursday? You know, what is our ability to make that happen within our legal realm? So, needs to be in a construction standard, and that's what we're working on.
I think part of the difficulty with South Lane is you've got two different developers that.
We got three now.
Three now. And so, one gets his part done, the road's closed for a while, reopens for a few weeks, and then, next thing you know, it's closed again. And it feels like it's just been closed forever.
Aren't those guidelines included in the public improvement bond agreement?
No, well, not a timeline.
Okay.
Well, there's an expiration of your approval, but as far as during that approval time, it's, we work out a traffic control plan, and, but our ability to pull that.
Jason could talk to that, right? You, you submit your bond money, and you sign the agreement, and that's included in the agreement, and you move on?
Yeah, it, it doesn't get really specific as far as, okay, what if I need to shut down two, two lanes for three weeks? Well, we want it two weeks, and if you go beyond that, it's a thousand dollars a day, or whatever, whatever that penalty is, how that is laid out is not spelled out right now.
I think the point maybe that you're making, that might be off here, that typically, we have a hard time collecting. You know, a developer goes out, and, you know, they get an encroachment permit, they can do work in a right-of-way with plans that have been approved, and that sort of a thing, they have to post a bond for that kind of work. And typically, we're withholding something that we otherwise would give back to them, rather than collecting from them in the form of, like, a fine. Because sometimes that collection's a challenge, so that, that's usually part of the program, in terms of making sure that that incentive is real, and, you know, that it's a real motivation for somebody.
I assume there are inspections that take place along the way when they're doing stuff like that, so that if there's a huge penalty for them to get done quick, they're not just doing a shoddy, quick job just to get it done.
Yeah.
That they're still being looked at.
We have bond money for all the infrastructure, so we have a water line bond, we have a sewer line, asphalt, a trail. We have, we have bond money for all the actual pieces, so if one fails and they, they walk, we have the money to go fix it ourselves. And then, as they complete it, we then release up to ninety percent of the money. And then, once they're all done, we have a year warranty, so they wait a year, we make sure it's still going to hold for that year, and then we return that last ten percent.
Perfect. How do you guys want to approach this? Should we just have Mike give a quick summary?
I looked through a lot of this, and I, I think that staff has done a great job of redlining some of it, and then adding the parts that are in there. And obviously, staff has had a lot more experience with that, and, and knows what has been working, and where the shortcomings are. So, I compliment staff for, this is kind of a long, boring night ordeal, in a way. So, I think it looks great, and, you know, I, I think that, I guess we've got a, this is a public hearing again.
It is, yeah.
I have a version of skip, for not going through it, I have a couple others I'd like to skip to then, I have some questions.
I mean, we can go through them all too, I'm good with either one.
Let's do it. So, on your site triangles, they're changing the size of those, down on thirty-two? Four nine thirty-two, four point nine thirty-two? Is that what I'm understanding that to be?
So, four point, what was it?
Well, it shows them on four point nine thirty-two, that's a standard drawing, then later it shows that that's increasing. Let me just pull up printed it. It's changing from sixty to forty-five.
Yeah.
Why is that?
More in line with ASHTO, and it's a lot more conducive to existing homes that we have along Main Street, or along the block system, where the lot isn't even, you know, forty-five feet. So, technically, they can't park in their own driveway, kind of a thing. So, it, it's good up until about, I think it's either twenty-five or thirty miles an hour. That's what ASHTO would say through calculations, is your site triangle safe stop distance, et cetera? Anything above that, so if we have a development on Center Street, Fourth North, Canyon Road, which are all UDOT roads except for Center, we'd go off of the Green Book, and it would supersede this. And that's what one of the notes, right here says, refer to ASHTO, Chapter Three for streets with speeds higher than twenty-five. Sixty would have been good, clear up till forty-five miles an hour, and we feel like it's a little overbearing.
We were at forty-five for a long, long time, and went to sixty sometime in the recent past. And I think we've just seen that being problematic.
We've just had a lot of comments in meetings, I'm thinking of just our last meeting. The branch lady from the subdivision.
Yeah, the fourteen hundred.
Yeah, I mean, that was, we've had that concern brought up quite a bit, and about either obstructions, parking, vehicles parking, limiting sight, and that's, or line of sight looking down the road as you're pulling on to it. So, it seems to be a concern of several people, it'd be a concern of mine too, especially, I know along the busier roads, it's a, it's a bigger triangle. But I just wonder why, the reason why we felt the reason to shrink it down. I mean, you explained the, with the newer, smaller lots, and where their driveways are placed, and that's probably your reasoning behind it.
Yeah.
And what specifically does this affect, planting of trees, fences?
Anything on a block that's. Odd permanent structure, I think it, it even says you can't park there. I mean, norm, but you couldn't plant a tree, you couldn't put a boulder, so I have fence, things like that.
Sometimes even a shed, you know, something like that.
So, if you're backing up, you're looking over your shoulder, can you see a kid on a bike?
So, if they.
Can you see a car coming?
So, if they adjust this, change it to the sixty, and we find some problem areas, could the city approach, or still do something?
It's going from sixty to forty-five.
Or changing, sorry, from sixty down, down to the forty-five. Could the city approach property owners, or, and explain to them what the issue is? Obviously, I guess at that point, legally, the property owner can still do whatever they want, once we've changed this?
Quite probably, yeah, and I guess maybe just take this for what it's worth. But I think us getting to where we're dealing with all of the forty-five foot site triangle issues that we have in town, that's what we should focus on, until we get those more in hand.
But why, why shrink it?
Well, and I'll say this as well, I think frankly, for property owners to be asked to have that greater limitation on the use of their property, it makes it a lot more harder for us to manage. I mean, really, it's a bigger impact than you might think for somebody that has a corner lot. So, I think that's, that's, that's a big part of why I think forty-five is, is a very functional number to use. To some extent, we could say, you know, why not make it ninety, you know, or, you know, you, you could make a case even for something probably greater, depending on exactly how, you know, what that safety factor might be that you want to employ. But just in terms of being practical, and certainly some of the things that Mike mentioned about just lot sizes, and, and some different things that we see in terms of trends that way. Managing the issue again at forty-five feet, in my mind, I think that's a great next step really for us to focus on firmly. And in all candor, and, you know, sometimes when we talk about these things, at least for me, I become a lot more aware of the issue. And as you drive around the community, you might find that going forward, as you're sitting in an intersection, you look, you know, to your left or right, and see a six foot tall fence right up to a sidewalk, or something like that. So, I guess that's partly where I'm coming from, is I feel like, let's take one step and get to that level of safety, and then maybe reevaluate if we feel like it's needed at that point.
So, what is the city doing to get to that level of safety? How are you managing it?
Yeah, primarily functioning, focusing on things that haven't been built yet. So, doing things like asking everybody to get a fence permit before they build a fence, and not charging anybody for those permits. Because all we want is to make sure that the fence is put in the right place, and that it's the right type of fence for the right place. So that we don't have this kind of an issue where it's maybe even not at an intersection, but it's maybe adjacent to a driveway. Different things like that. I, I don't believe we are out, you know, knocking on people's doors at this point in time, and telling them to take their existing fences down, and that sort of a thing. But obviously, you know, we have those conditions out in the community, and they're challenging to deal with. You know, as an entity that is concerned about how our citizens feel about what we're doing, and what we're asking them to do, and how we're asking them to do it, and that type of a thing, you know, so we're not doing a lot, I guess, is maybe another way to answer your question.
How is the city making that kind of an ordinance known to the citizens? You know, I wasn't even aware that there was a requirement to get a fence permit until just now. Would it be best to do that through contractors? Because, you know, unless you're watching this meeting, I don't know how you're going to know that you need that permit. I think most property owners know about the, the limit on six foot fences, and that you have to set those back, and things like that. That's kind of a, it's kind of a, you know, something that's just logical.
I would think where you say, where I say the most is landscaping. It would be the size of landscaping they plant on their corner. Not aware that that bush that might be this tall now is going to be six feet.
Especially where there are utility boxes of the cities and stuff, you know, electrical boxes and telephone and stuff. A lot of people want to landscape around those and kind of hide them. So, you're right, those.
Landscaping's easier to fix though than fences are.
Certainly, yep.
I don't know, I, I see a lot of people with, like, really expensive landscaping.
You know, a big coniferous tree, maybe something like that, that somebody might have to limb up, or that type of thing could be a problem.
Communication on that is just kind of difficult.
Well, welcome, whatever suggestions you have, you know, we used to think that city newsletter was a viable option.
It's been in the newsletter before.
It's been in the newsletter, I think we've done Facebook and other social media kinds of things. We've used SFCN in the past for different things like that. But you're right, I mean, I think a lot of folks don't know, you also mentioned contractors. I think the word is out, you know, among, you know, at least some of the companies that build fences and that type of thing. And they help us get it right, but that's more than I mentioned, that's more than I wanted to say on, on the site triangle.
I think social media, I think social media is a great, is a great way to do it, like, you know, Spanish Fork Fact one oh one.
Yeah. It's, and, of course, it's something that you can't just do in two thousand and twenty, and, you know, let it be good for the next decades. We probably are due for another round.
Have you tried holding a sign on the corner near City Hall and flipping the sign up? Get your fence permit? Throwing it around and dancing, Dave?
Hadn't come to mind, I'm not sure that I appreciate reading it up.
You'd get some attention on that.
No, hadn't, hadn't thought of that.
Yeah, truly, social media, I mean, people are scrolling, and they'll see, they can see a little thing, like any of those things that you're putting in the city newsletter. My husband is the guy that reads the city newsletter and tours around these things. But I know that most people don't, and so, something like this is like, oh, what is that? And, and this, this particular thing matters to me, because I have a friend that was very injured in a car accident because of sight on a corner, and it's going to be through the rest of her life. And it's gonna be through the rest of her life. And so, you know, this matters.
So when I got a fence permitted like two different times, they said, and you're responsible to go get a permit through the cities for those reasons. So I did appreciate that. And I told them that. I said, hey, by the way, thanks for reminding me or telling me that. And I hope you keep doing it to your other customers.
Yeah.
That say you need to make sure you get a permit through the city.
Is there a penalty for putting up a fence without a permit or building a shed without a permit?
Practically speaking, no. We just want people to fix it. That's all we care about. There are situations where we've had to get Mr. Sant involved to try to compel somebody to fix it. But all we really care about in the end of the day is getting it fixed.
We we have an advantage in Spanish Fork. We've got Pete and SFCN who who do a lot of. Community. Things, public service things. And that, you know, I we've talked about roundabouts, you know, and Goose in the Wild did one on roundabouts. And, you know, those things get put on on TV and they're there for off and on for a year or more. And maybe maybe the city could partner with SFCN to do some of these things in some way, shape or form. You know, raise public awareness of some of these things.
But you did say the city is essentially doing nothing about that, but one of my neighbors came across the street and said, hey, the city came and trimmed my tree the other day.
Yeah, we've done a lot of that.
That's great.
Several reasons to trim the tree. One of them is street sweeping. You want our street sweeper to get, you know, clipped with the tree branch. There's the clear site triangles. There's a couple other things that the city does that those trees do grow in the way. Power lines are another one where, yeah, they send a letter out and said, hey, your tree's violation. We'll come trim it for you. So I thought that was a positive thing that they did.
Totally.
On another topic that I hope isn't as long of a cancer.
On this or on another?
Where you're changing the setbacks for approaches into drives, so we can turn into a driveway, the last page.
Yeah.
What that's lot sizes are shrinking. I'm sure that's why we so you don't have a conflict with too small of a lot. You can't meet those dimensions for the size of lots in some of these subdivisions. What? How big of a lot is that accommodating? When you go to just eighty feet, is that gonna get down to? I mean, what's the, what's the size of that building parcel?
So basically, we would say that the we need the house. So in this example, I can show you a couple of examples that have come up. But we want the driveway as far away from the road as possible. So if we can reconfigure, if it's a really small lot, we'll try and, hey, the road, let's try and have the house face a different direction if there if that's possible. If it's not possible, we're gonna scoot as far, in this case, to the right as possible. If it's less than the eighty, we'll do it the best we can.
But that's it's being, lots are smaller now, right? That's what's driving this, correct? Could prefer to have it as far away from the corner as we can.
Yeah. This one, for example, there's one in a subdivision that was new and the road right here flipped and came south. So this is what this house could face this way or face this way. So in those options, we want them to face east. If they still want to face north, then we'd say, all right, well, you need to put this driveway. At least enough that if you're backing out and a car comes around the corner and it's again based on your collector or a local road. How much time do they have to stop? And what's that stop site distance? So we looked, we're the consulting firms just say, okay, what is the ideal distance? And so that's the distance that we've come up with.
And then not in this, I didn't see is have, are you working on, we talked about how we're pinching the streets down?
Yeah.
Like you did in front of Goose's house. How's is that gonna be coming out in future versions of this or is that study still ongoing or what's going on?
We're trying to see what works. And so far, those, we have one up by the reservoir. John's probably driven through it a couple of times. And then that one, and they both have worked exactly how we hoped they would. So the intent would be that as we observe areas or test areas that have high speeds. We first put that in and figure out what configuration for that type of area really work. Like we're doing in front of Goose's house. And then eventually go to a concrete.
Where's that one at?
Fourth East and Sixth North.
Okay.
Between Fifth and Sixth. And then come up with a concrete median island signs of more professional finish look to it than just cones. But I mean, those cones are five hundred bucks and the amount of labor to go put them up. We take them down during the winter so we don't have snow pile issues. Merge the vehicles, can just plow right over the top. We've really enjoyed having, it's been a good experience so far and we've gotten the speeds there. We can shift the cone slightly, but we've gotten it. So the speeds are between twenty-five and twenty-seven. On average for that street with fewer over the thirty-five, forty range. Before, I think we had like ten to fifteen in the sixty miles an hour.
I I drive that all the time, leaving Costco or Quick Quack heading over to Fourth North. And it's, I know it's where my speeds would hit on the sign there. Not intending it to be fast.
Oh, yeah.
And being over all the time. And now just having to concentrate on getting through that opening, which is it's a big opening, but it's smaller than it was.
Yeah, it's exactly the width of the lane. You just can't drive too quick. And so, yeah, the average speed there was, or eight fifth percentile was thirty-four. And now it's down in the twenty-sixes, twenty-sevens.
So the city talked about removing the, especially with the high school redesign where the main entrance is gonna be on the west side now. You guys talked about removing the speed bumps that are there and doing something like this. You'll be doing that?
They'll be gone.
Okay.
Not ideal for snowplows or emergency vehicles. So those will be gone and we'd put other narrowing roads, those type of things in there.
Any more?
We find people speed after the speed bump. They speed at least five to ten miles an hour faster than they did before it. So it did great to slow them down or a stop sign, for example, to just flopping around. They gotta make up time. Where a roundabout or those narrowing sections, it's like, oh, what speed am I going? I'll let go of the gas. I look at my speed. I'm going a little quick. I'll slow down. Just that thought process brings the speed down and they don't feel like they have to punch it right after the. Traffic coming in. One more thing, we did speed tests as well, hundred feet on either side of that section there to see if we did get a punch. After it and it was pretty like one mile an hour. It was pretty small. Where speed bumps is, you know, five, ten, you get more angry than, oh, I should probably slow down. Anyway, I'll just jump through real quick, two of these or a couple of these real quick. There's a big section on asphalt, if you noticed that, really, that was an attempt to. Make our standards just better, a little more bulletproof, a little more of what most contractors are doing, but tightening some loose ends. We hired a contractor or sorry, a consultant that came in, helped us write this, went through a lot of iterations with our streets crew. To get it down to a good spot, really talks about control on the quality, quality assurance. Talks about pre-paving meetings, which we've been having and the overall from the contractor, supplier and the city is, those are the best things ever. To have a meeting before they get out there with asphalt ready to go and they've got the wrong mix, the ground's not prepped like it should be. Someone was supposed to talk to somebody and he's not here, so we gotta wait. So we gotta send that, we gotta send that truck back. Just our paving jobs, both city and contractor developer, they've been significantly better since that. So we amended it before we did this because everyone thought it was a good idea. So we didn't need a code to allow us to do it. But we do wanted a code that we have to do it. So that's been good. We jumped down to the drawings. So this is probably the only one I'll go over. So a lot of areas, we have driveways that are planned to go over the top of water meter cans. And those can be damaged by vehicles parking on or driving on them. So what happens is say Salisbury home wants to be built. The water meter is in the driveway of where they want their dream house. And they're like, we want it there. And they're like, well, we've already installed it. We can't have you drive over it. So we can either sneak it in. And I'm not picking Salisbury in particular. I'm just saying, any any home builder. We can just pour it, but the city will probably catch you at some point. So we're gonna charge you five grand to pull out what we just put in six weeks ago. And put it in a manhole section so it can be structurally sound and not be damaged. Because it is a liability for the city, those meter lids coming off. We have to spend money for our insurance to send someone to walk. And look at all the meter lids. Because if someone walks in them, it's technically city property and it's our liability.
Are these the ones in the tree strip generally?
Yep. And so we we to eliminate the liability, we spend money to have someone go walk and make sure they're all on. And that seems foolish. And especially on a car driving in them, et cetera. So we thought, well, why don't we make a standard where we can have all the utilities? Both PI, pressure irrigation and drinking water in one manhole with a manhole lid that's not gonna fall out. Because it's not, you can't, unless you go physically try and pull it out, it's not going anywhere. So this is an attempt at that. You can see the pressure irrigation up higher than the drinking water that's down below. And then also eliminates that home buyer coming in and saying, I have to add five grand to my house. Because I really want my driveway right here. Where if it's a manhole section, there's no additional, there might be a little cost in the hun, like four hundred dollar range. But it saves them from that five thousand dollar change order on their house. So.
Is this the one that has the valve? You talking about the, the one that has the valve that you're supposed to turn on and off at the end of each season?
It'll have that and your drinking water one in the same one.
So that instead of having a green plastic lid, you're saying it's gonna be a manhole cover that will, that they would have to get off each time?
Metal one with the cap on it for your radio read. The the water meter one, they'll be all in one.
Those pretty, I don't know, because I've got the green one. I assume then that the metal ones are pretty easy to get off if people need to get in and turn their PI on or off.
Yeah, yeah, that's for your drinking water. But yeah, we probably, we don't want people to touch those as much.
One thing that I looked at just now is the. Chapter on surface irrigation systems. It looks like that's been stricken. Is it somewhere else in this? Right there, remember?
Yes, that was put in a different title.
So it's in a different title. It hasn't been deleted. It's just in a different place.
Yeah, we had a improvement to it. It was in three different policies by different departments. So we took all three of them, combined them in one, made it what we've brought to here previously. I think it was a year, eight months ago. And so this is just cleaning it up.
Yeah.
I think that was the last one. I guess these are overly exciting. So. Yeah, I think I've talked enough. So if there's any others you have questions on?
Okay, go into public hearing and then. Address any, anything else afterwards. Okay, we'll move into public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wants to address the policy four point three nine construction standards? Seeing none, we'll move out of public hearing. Any additional comments, questions, any anybody wants to bring up before we? Move forward on this one?
Great job.
It's a lot of stuff. Yeah, thanks, Mike.
Wonderful.
Our goal is to bring these every two to three months with three or four items instead of what this looks like. So I apologize for the length.
Yeah.
Make a motion that the planning commission recommends approval of policy four point three nine construction standards to city council.
Got a motion?
I'll second it.
Got a second. We'll do roll call vote again, starting with Commissioner Ernest.
Yes.
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 And yes.
That gets recommended to the city council. All right, moving on to the next one, sanitary master plan.
So this is a full master plan update like I just showed you for the transportation one. This is a modification to the existing master plan. There will be one coming, we're about halfway done with it. For a new master plan in the next year or so. But this is just a modification to the existing one. And the change comes, let me show you the old ones so you know where we're, where we were. There we go. And. There we go. So the the old master plan had a forest main coming along the side of the freeway right here. It's that dashed orange line that's hard to see. They came up to this location here, went north and then came along the railroad tracks. And that was how we're gonna service that southwest area. Through a couple more studies several years ago and talking to landowners, looking a little deeper at the master plan in this segment. Came up with a little more cost efficient and developer friendly, we'll call it way of. Getting to this area and servicing it. So instead, the lift station is kitty corner, will be kitty corner to River Health. Should be built in the next year in a little bit. It'll pump north to ninth south. And then if you know where the road banks and kind of turns and goes north to the Sugarbee Factory. Now it'll go down that road under I fifteen and then it'll connect up to where the original plan had it going.
Have a question about a little red line at the end. It looks like it comes off of Powerhouse Road and down eighty-eight hundred south right now.
This one?
I'm sure, yeah, I'm sure that's just a future one that would be built at some point in time.
It's really, if this area were to develop, again, we have the TDRs, we have a whole bunch of other things in consideration for the river bottoms. But if the area were to develop, how would it be serviced is?
Have there been requests along that, along Powerhouse Road or?
We had one interested, I'd say, up in this area.
Yep.
But other than that, it's not too much, at least in my court. I don't know about planning, but. It's a tough area.
My neighbors and I, that's why I wondered if there had been any requests other than the one.
Other changes, originally had a sewer line coming down Main Street servicing from the south to the north. And not a lot of consideration out down here on this lower shelf. This one better reflects what, there's some casings under the river. There's a few other considerations. And so this is generally what we see that area if it were to develop being sewed rather than Main Street. Because on the west side of Main Street is a hill. That could service a different direction. We don't see it coming this way and we wouldn't want it to for capacity reasons. So again, just a slight change of where it's going. I think there's one more up here with the transfer station. The location of these airport, this airport lift station changed just because of development changed. Things have changed since this was published. And so now it shows the north lift station where the transfer station will be. So again, just more aligning with what our planning and development discussions have been, just making this plan align with that.
How many lift stations does the current, the city currently have?
Uh, three.
What do those look like?
Physically or where?
Yeah, physically.
They're usually pretty ugly buildings and try and not stand out too much, to be honest.
What's, what's the?
Right in the corner of.
North Main Street.
What used to be Longview.
Yeah.
In there and yeah, right on North Main, that brick.
Are they usually fenced?
No. They're just.
A lot of times they are. It depends where they are and what level of security. So.
Okay.
There you go.
Who's that guy? Most look similar to that. Some in higher end neighborhoods, Park City. They may make it look like a house. I've seen one that had windows in the front door, even though it wasn't a real door. Seen those in areas. I've seen one look like a barn, seen one look like a silo. But ninety-nine percent of what you'd see around the county would be this.
Any idea how old that one is?
Been there for?
I have no idea. Sixty years, I don't know.
Really?
This one's old. Yeah.
Does a master plan include? Any kind of? Long range examination of alternative fuels being generated from? The product that's produced at the wastewater plant such as methane? Or?
Long term, no. I don't know if it would be a large enough that the infrastructure investment would mean a whole lot. Now, using the bio solids that are produced after that are dried, those are hauled off for beneficial use. A class B solids product. But as far as burning the methane. I haven't heard it being a viable option yet. Doesn't mean it won't be, but I don't know if it's been looked at. We are doing a new treatment plant and I'm not involved in the details of that, but I could ask if that's being looked at for the new plant. I know up to this date, we haven't used the methane for anything else.
Can you show us where the location of the new water treatment plant will be in comparison with the existing?
One here. That's the second one. One here, that's the second one up by the jail.
Okay.
And the third one is, uh, by the river, um, for the field stone development on the west side of town, kinda by the ball fields.
They're not big, they don't take up the big footprint?
There's one off the freeway in Linden, that's kinda by a domo sign and an ivory development. It was a building in a field for a while. That's another one, that's probably the biggest one I've seen. Yeah, that one's got uh, three sewer pumps, two land drain pumps, and three pressure irrigation pumps. So they use the groundwater to pressurize the irrigation system in that one. So. So the existing plant is
Right there.
Right there. And the new plant will be built on that property.
What's the plan with the current property?
Um, so it'll remain in service while the other one's being built until it can be fully transferred, uh, the flow from one to the other, all the flow comes in right here. So the pipe will just be brought across this way, that's why it was a pretty, uh, great site for us. Um, it'll be turned into more, um, shops, um, right now we have quite a few employees, have, you know, six employees in a, in an office kinda thing right now, um, so it'd be an expansion of what you see there, more parking for trucks, um, power and light building to house the employees and other stuff there.
So the city plans on keeping the property then?
Yeah, and I have a picture real quick, I can show you of that. Not of the uh, it's of the new plant, so, something like that.
Oh. Cool.
Again, this was a concept, so there's a couple iterations from here, but.
So the footprint isn't any larger than what we currently have, but you're, you're saying that this new facility will be able to handle eighty-four, whatever, a thousand people that?
Yeah, so it won't go all the way till, um, build out without some expansion, and I mean, expansion within the plant. So they'll build it today for a certain distance, uh, certain number of ERCs, we call it, number of connections. And then at that point, you can add more membranes, you can add more this or that to the existing system, so it might be, uh, there might be three trains, they call it, we might only use one, and then in five years, the second one will come in, and then ten years later, the third one will come in. But it's all within the same footprint buildings that you see.
And is there room hundred years from now to expand that if needed, or at that point, do you build a secondary water, water treatment center?
Um, this is guessing, but my guess would be depending on where growth is, if there's a lot of growth west, and we're all pumping from West Mountain all the way to this treatment plant, you can think of that distance, it might make sense to build a second plant closer to the lake, similar to Provo, and, uh, have all those pump stations instead go there, or maybe they could gravity there, rather than having them all try and get back to this one.
Okay.
So as, as we grow, and I mean, the green spaces to the west, um, that might be a future option there. Yeah, this one will service eighty thousand off of that.
Shifting gears just a little bit. Shifting them quite a ways. Uh, on the south end of town, uh, near Annie's Acres, uh, we have on the map a twelve-inch line going south under the river, and then an eight-inch line in red going over near the, uh, uh, mitigation pond. There was some talk in a previous meeting about a conduit that's under the river that would accommodate that. Is that conduit, uh, actually there? And is it in that area where that's drawn out?
Yep, it's right there.
So it is in there.
Yep.
And it is under the river. And could be put into use. Okay.
Anything else, Mike, on this one?
I'm trying to see if there's any thing worth bringing up. Those are the main changes. I guess the other change, if you wanna call it that, um, we just looked at some cheaper alternatives to servicing that west side of the freeway. Um, so if, uh, Target Home Depot, something were to come down in this west side of the freeway, how do we service the west side of the freeway, how do our lift stations? How can we position them so it's, uh, mostly expensive to pump, easiest to install, so instead of this, um, lift station being in the corner, and then having to service these guys all the way out, instead we put one here, but put it a little deeper, so it can service both directions. That way you don't have to have a developer put one in five thousand feet away from his development, or we put it in, then they have to run that huge trunk line all the way there, rather we put the lift station in the middle, and then run a pipe out each direction, so, a couple of those things, just a deeper dive, uh, made it a little more clear of a better alternative.
Does the city put in the pipes to the lift stations, or do the developers do that?
Um, so in this case, um, let me go back to other map. In this case, we build the lift station and a way for it to get to the treatment plant, and that's kind of our, um, dedication to development, creating a way for it to happen, and then they pay us back through impact fees. Um, so not one developer has to upfront all the costs to build this eight million dollar line and everything. We build it, and then they pay us back through impact fees as they develop, um, but the idea is they would develop quicker because there's not that, that wall to jump over of a lift station.
It's already there and ready to go.
It's already there.
Okay.
So, that's this one here.
Okay, thank you, Mike. Let's move into public hearing, is there anybody here that would like to speak on the sanitary master plan? Alright, seeing none, we'll move out of public hearing. Any additional questions or comments from the commissioners?
We like, um, changing our plans frequently, not just to change them, but to update if we find a better way, so if um, the public or anyone from the commissioner or state council wants to come sit down, ask why, or ask can this, could this happen, or, you know, walk through those, we're very open to that, and make changes like this as frequently as we can to, uh, make it better. We don't wanna have it be a plan that's only updated every five years just 'cause. So.
Where does the water from the ditches and gutters go? Does that get piped and go down to the waste treatment center, or is that just go down into the ground, into wells?
So, the sewer that comes out of your house would go all the treatment plant, um, then we have a separate system, it's the storm drain system, and that's that collects the water from the roads, curb gutter, your driveway, and that's a separate pipe. Um, the reason to keep it separate is if they were combined, every time it rained, we'd all spend a lot of money treating, you know, storm drain water. Now, some cities do experience that, where there's cross connections, where inlet boxes, oops, connected into a sewer. So you see these big fluctuations when it rains, and they're treating, you know, three times the amount of water, and they overflow their sewer slash storm drain. Um, so ours is separate, and ours goes either to the river, um, or to Dry Creek, um, or to main water bodies that our storm drain hits.
So when we have a big storm, and occasionally you see, uh, storm drain that gets backed up and huge puddles in the roads, what causes that, and what does the city do to prevent those or to fix those?
Yeah, most of the time it's that, uh, leaves or other debris's gotten in the way, and so it's clogging it. Um, another one, and it's typically the block system, um, that the ditches were built for irrigation, so as you move farther away from the source, the ditches get smaller. Right, 'cause there's less water to irrigate your, um, your grass back in the day, right? Um, where storm drain, the farther you go down, the more water is there, 'cause it's more being collected, so storm drain and irrigation are separate, so the ditches, um, aren't really made to convey super huge storms. So it's really in function of keeping everything clean, and then finding those choke points, um, that even if it were clean, it can't handle, and build pipe, um, or piping system, rather than using irrigation old pipes that were there. So Fourth North is a particular one that sees quite a bit of flooding through there, and there's been quite a bit of work there to try and mediate that, remediate them. But our new, uh, LID standard is to keep everything on site rather than sending it down the pipe, so that's mostly east side of town have those underground chambers that let soak into the ground rather than those pipes.
Since we've had those LID systems for the last few years, how have they handled these, uh, usually the highest flows are in a thunderstorm event, where everything gets overwhelmed for a while. How are those LID systems handling it?
So they're built for a twenty-five-year storm, we usually get one to three of those a year.
Yep.
It's just a percent chance of it happening, so a four percent chance of it happening in a year, and we oftentimes get two to three a year. And, uh, they, they handle it well. They're slightly more than twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-five-year storm in size, and the percolation rates we test to make sure it's gonna work, and, yeah, even the oldest ones we have in are, you'll never see it ponding there.
Have we, uh, ever had one fill up enough that, uh, the, uh, most of them have, uh, an excess gate or valve that allows that water to go somewhere else?
Yeah, so our detention.
Have we ever filled one up yet?
No.
I haven't seen it.
Nope, the only ones that filled up were ones where the groundwater behaved differently than we thought, and we've had to kind of retrofit some of those. But, and for the most part, yes, they've behaved well, and if they were to over top, it will, uh, get to a street or a storm drain that's nearby.
Great.
I know that we, uh, recommend adopting the, uh, sanitary sewer master plan to the city council.
Can I have a motion?
Second it.
And a second. Roll call vote again?
Yes.
Commissioner Ernest?
Yes.
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 All in favor, that gets recommended to the city council. Thank you, Mike, for all of that, that was some good information.
Stop by anytime you wanna ask more, give me a call.
Okay. Alright. Looks like we are to the bottom of our list for this meeting. So, do I have a motion to adjourn to the work session?
So moved.
Alright. So we are adjourned.